Two in the afternoon and. We'll call this. This commission work session to order.
Great. So Commissioner, wait, this is a retreat format of our work session and so we do have an agenda that is. Was just sent out to the commissioners to follow along with basically the topic for the agenda is just retreat. So if you would like to approve that agenda, then we can, we can move along and begin the program.
All right. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Chairman, I have an amendment to offer to the agenda. Move that we add. Item two to the agenda, future plans for the K G Y lease property on North Point. Specifically discussion of the letter from K G Y general manager Nick Carey dated twelve nine twenty one.
Okay, so the motion has been amended. To add future plans for K G Y, specifically the letters that were received from. From K G Y. Is there a second to? A second to the motion?
All second for purpose of discussion.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion then?
Joe, can you say more about why you feel like that's appropriate at this meeting?
Amy, Commissioner Evans.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Downing, my apologies.
Okay, anyway, Commissioner Evans, I do feel like it's germane to today's work session. Because the letter was dated December ninth twenty twenty one, which is coming up on two months ago. And the, my personal policy as commissioner is to try to stay in my lane vis a vis policy and leadership. But when. You know, the, the public or concerned. Person with a relationship with the port draws in the commissioners, then we need to make sure that. Now it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that's followed up upon. So I just want to bring it up in an open meeting. Let the public know that we have been advised of. Potential lease reassignment from their current. Occupants of the K G Y lease and, and you know, I'm interested in what staff is, is where they're at in this process. Of responding to that letter from two months ago.
Chairman, I L, was that something that you wanted on the agenda or something you saw being more appropriate for future discussion?
It was not something I had planned for the agenda today. But I, you know, I, I think it's, if we want to have a brief discussion about it today, I think it would be relevant so that we can. Ask, ask, ask for some prepared materials for the next regular meeting that we can actually put it on the agenda for. Maybe not, not for action necessarily, but for, for further discussion.
For me, I would typically defer to the chair and the staff as far as the agenda. I have met with some of the parties involved and a meeting with. Mr. Carey this week, so I agree with you on follow up, Commissioner Downing. That's kind of where I'm at on it.
Okay, well, let's go to the vote then. All in favor of approving the agenda with the addition of future plans for K G Y, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. And we can. We can move on to the next there. Sam, go right ahead.
Do you need a motion on the agenda? Chairman, I L, to approve the agenda with as so amended?
I thought we just did.
Yeah, Chairman, I think Amy's correct. If move to approve the agenda as amended.
My apologies, I thought we just did that. So, okay. We, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Sheila, if you can pull up the PowerPoint. Great, Commissioners, thank you for opening up this, today's. Retreat slash work session, and I do have some members of staff here, they'll mostly be. Tracking along off camera, but if we have questions of them at pertinent times, we can, they are available. I want to remind both the commissioners and the public of where we are in the process. If you can go to the next slide, Sheila. And as you recall, we did have a retreat scheduled at the very beginning of the year and due to the Omicron. Variant and the incredible increase of COVID cases in the community, we postponed that and have gone to an online version. So on February second, we had an introduction to strategic planning with. Mr. Jim Darling. Today is Commission Relations Principles and Practices with facilitator Holly O'Neill. On Wednesday, we will be doing a session of Robert's Rules of Order called Jurassic Parliament, which includes both Robert's Rules as well as. Best management practices regarding public meetings. And then on February twenty second, we will then be circling back around to see if we can reach. Agreement on what, if anything, that you would like to have updated in your rules resolution. Next slide. Then following the retreat, I will be bringing back the agreements for. Amending and taking it to the kind of our, your formal adoption process for rules resolution, come to you first as an advisory on March twenty fourth. And then come back to you for action on the twenty eighth. Again, we're then looking at our first strategic planning work session. And note that the asterix on the March twenty first, that is a regular scheduled. Work session time. We don't know if that date is going to align. We'll be working on scheduling. That with, with Mr. Jim Darling and whether we can do it that day or whether we need to have a separate session. So please stay tuned for that. I'm sure you'll be hearing for us of trying, us trying to coordinate our calendars. Next slide. And now what introduce Ms. Holly O'Neill. She is going to be both your facilitator today as well as your subject matter expert on. Commission relations or in related to both boards and elected officials. Holly comes to us with an extensive background in helping both government agencies as well as nonprofit and cooperative forms of business. So Holly has worked up in Watkin County, but also out on the Olympic Peninsula. She has done work with. Other ports, notably Port of Port Angeles and helping them with public process. So she does know, know ports. She's worked with us for the, the past couple of years, really helping us to clarify our processes and make those transparent to both the commission as well as staff and the public. And without further ado, further ado, I will turn this over to Ms. O'Neill.
Yay. Thank you, Sam. Okay, well, good to see you all again, and I'm. I am gonna hope that my internet stays steady. I just got that little bit of flicker, so if I have to turn off my camera at any point. Just know that I am properly lurking at all moments of this meeting, so never fear. I am here. So let's jump in. Next slide. So the purpose of today's session is to develop a common understanding of how we will cultivate relationships of respect in our work together to uphold the mission of the port. And the agenda is constructed in three parts. Next slide. So you saw the long version of the agenda, but this is really the heart of it. So we're gonna, we're gonna think about relations and cultivating effective relations in three parts. So the first part is the commission itself. How does the commission work together as a body? The second is the commissioner, the commission and the executive director, and how do they work together as a team? And then lastly is the commission and the public. So we're gonna take each of these in turn, and I think. The, the, the least conversation, I think it'll actually work really well to do that at the end because it kind of provides a good. A good working example, I think. I've really, how do, you know, when people approach us and they have ideas or we have ideas, how do we actually do that? How do we work with that well and efficiently? So that's what we've got on the docket. Okay, next slide, please. So. This is kind of a concept of how we're gonna work together today. I'm gonna go through some pointers, but I have intentionally kept. My presentation times fairly short because the main goal here is to hear each other's perspectives. You all have. The, your own professional experience, you know, in the world. Of course, Joe has been here for quite a few years, but. But all of you are bringing fresh perspectives and insights in terms of how to, how do groups work well together? During the meeting, if you can raise hands to be recognized to speak either just on the screen or with the, the button, that will be great. And if I can't see you, I'm gonna rely on, on one of you guys to help out. So, and if you can say Holly, you know. Make sure to let, let some, you know, somebody into the conversation. I want to flag that this is not a decision making session, so. If, if you, if in the middle of discussing, I might ask, like, how would that process work? Then we can talk about what it could look like and kind of bandy it about, but ultimately we want to write it down, actually make sure we're clear, have some time to think, and then you can bring it to a future meeting for, for an actual decision on your process. And then lastly, just to remind you that you do have that time ahead with Ann and Jim. So if there's questions that come up that you'd like their input on, then we can flag those as well, and I'll be keeping notes throughout the meeting. Tiki. So, next slide. I thought this might be a great moment to remind everybody of the cards, which now I don't know that we've even ever, ever met, right? You, you'll have never met in person, correct? I think I've been with you, one of those anyway. So on, on your, your desk, on your, your dais, when you eventually do meet again, and even not. Even if we're just working here in the online environment, one of the things, the tools that we've been using as a group is to have. To invite you to think about what is the purpose of your comment? And if you can say that upfront, it's super helpful and it really creates some efficiencies. It's sort of like, one of, one of the tricks to creating better efficiency in a meeting and more focus. Is to avoid being like, you know, those, those commercials on TV where it's a lot of happy people and they're, they're laughing and there's pretty colors and you get all the way through and you don't know what the commercial is about. You know, is it laundry detergent? Is it drugs? You don't know. So this technique is to help us know what you want right up front. So is it a question? I have a question. I have a concern. I have a suggestion. This is a procedural issue. It's a strategic question, meaning it's, it's kind of at the upper level. It's at the governance level. Or is it an operational curiosity? So think about, as we get into this, I'm sorry, it's, it's a K V Y, I'm just the, what's? K G Y. When you get to K G Y, you might even start to think in your mind, so is this a strategic question? Or is it an operational curiosity? Is it that level of governance or is it the level of management? So keep that in the back of your mind. On, on the actual cards, also it says question for clarification. That's actually, which, that was a little mistake because a question for clarification has a specific meaning, meaning, which is that you don't understand. So you might have all sorts of questions. That particular term is generally reserved for, I don't actually understand what's being said. So just for future reference. Okay, got it? So you might want to jot that down, even if you got your PowerPoint in your, in your email, you can also refer back to it. But this, this really helps us. Any, any thoughts about this? Any questions? Okay, let's move on. All right, this is gonna be fun. We're gonna talk about y'all working as a body and look at, Amy, I'm not seeing the pearls. I'm double checking here. No, no pearls, but we see some ties. You guys look terrific. You look very charming. You look friendly and accessible. Good job. Doing great so far. This is your, your photo on your website. So there you are presenting yourself as the commission. So we're gonna talk about how do you actually want to work together? What are, what is your idea about what it looks like to function well as a group? So I'm gonna offer some ideas and then we're gonna open the floor for discussion. So next slide. All right, we're gonna start with the super important principle, and it's called the one voice principle. It's also called the, the concept of board holism or group or commission holism. And the, you know this, I'm not saying anything you don't know, but I, I think it is so critical to the effective function of a group. That, and it will save you so much trouble down the end that I, I'm gonna start with this. So reminder that the authority of the commission is held and used as a body. And that individuals, commissioners have no authority outside of the decisions made by the body. And decisions must be written down. So as your facilitator and consultant who's had the pleasure of working with the port for a while. I, I can testify here that every time where there's been a lot of wasted time and just kind of going around in circles. It's because we didn't have the decision clearly written down. So people would be like, well, I remember it this way. Well, I remember it that way. You'll remember this fondly, I know. You know, that it's just like, we, it, it wasn't clear. So we worked a lot on making sure that we had action minutes that were super clear on decisions. And again, if it's not written down, it's like it didn't happen. So it has to be written down. And that's how you speak, that your authority comes from a duly constituted meeting when you're making decisions as a group. Makes sense? Everybody got that? Okay, next slide. So this is a great little diagram of the one voice principle in action. So here's the happy commission or the happy board and they're saying, we want cookies. And there's your, your executive director or CEO and, and she says, okay, I will get you, you, I'll get you cookies. It's nice and clear, right? Very clear. Next slide. And unfortunately, this is what happens way too often, where you have a board or a commission or a council. In government and they, and they're all saying different things and they're not writing it down and it's not clear, which confuses. The executive because there's not clear delegation, number one. It also makes it really unclear what, what he or she is supposed to actually be accountable for. So this, this is like absolutely critical to both how you come to unity, but also how you direct. Your executive director and we'll talk about it relative to your, your engagement with the public as well. So I'm sure you all, okay, Amy, I'm gonna start with you. You ready? Okay, are you gonna be chocolate pie or cookies?
Cookies, definitely cookies.
Definitely cookies. Mr. I L, Commissioner I L.
Well. I'm not really. I'm not really. Dedicated to one or the other. I like all of them, so. So, but I guess if I had to pick one, I'd go with pie.
Pie, okay. Joe, that leaves you with chocolate, unless you'd like to throw another dessert into the air.
I love chocolate. I love chocolate.
You're good. Okay, so now we know a lot more about you. Good job. Next slide. All right, here's a few tips on cultivating a culture of healthy debate and. I phrased this topic or phrased it this way on purpose because as Ann McFarland is going to impress upon you. This, the, your, your job as a group is not just to get along and chat and have discussions. Your job is to think critically and to debate and then come to a vote. So the, the question is how to do that well? What's the art of doing that well? So here's a couple of tips. And then you get to add yours. One is that you want to hear different perspectives and that especially. Because we have two brand new commissioners and then we have Joe who's inexperienced commissioner here at the port. You're gonna have this nice balance between here's what we used to do or here, this, here's the best practices that we've developed. And then it's really important and it's not only important, it's like, um, it's almost like a moment, a golden moment. Because there's gonna be only a short time. That, that the two of you newcomers are gonna have, you're gonna be kind of clean. You have a fresh perspective. And so you'll be able to see things that once you're sucked in, you might not even see. So this is a really important time for you to be like asking questions. Now, how did we do that exactly? And to lean into that because that's, that's part of how an organization bumps and grows is because new people come in and they can think of things with, or see things with a critical eye. Your independent critical thinking is, is super important and that has to do with. You know, you, I trust and believe that all of you know how to disagree respectfully. Because that is what, as leaders of the port, it's, it's like, that's what you're modeling. That's, that's the kind of culture that I hope. That you're going to be creating here, like critical thinking, you're independent thinkers. But you can still, of course, be, you know, be civil. End versus means, this idea is super important when you're working on a, on a governing body, which is you can debate, there's a thousand ways to do something. If you are clear on what you're trying to achieve, then, then you can allow yourself a lot more creativity, but you get clear on what it is, you're, where you're going. There's a term that we use sometimes called abstract up. You'll find yourself like down here, rah. And if you can abstract up to what's the goal or what's the point, the discussions will tend to be more cooperative and you'll get better, better results. Respect for time. So I have. I have seen an interesting dynamic in this board and certainly you're not alone, which is some things will just really get dragged out. And then other things will get shoved through. So time can actually be a stand in for. A lot of other things when it doesn't actually mean. Well, let me give you an example, like the, with the least thing, how long is too long? Like you guys have to, you know, if you can step up and ask, well, what is a reasonable amount of time? So, or, or if things are really getting slowed down and, and kind of constipated, then, then really could we move it along? So there is a real art form, as I'm sure you're aware, of giving things the proper amount of time. And then last but not least, addressing issues openly, even the awkward ones. If you've been around the block for. A while and are seeing this, this new, all the new kinds of ways that people are talking about diversity. In much stronger ways and bolder ways, part of it is being willing to live with discomfort. And I think that one of the things we've had trouble doing is sitting with discomfort. So this is my invitation to you. To be okay with sitting with your discomfort. Okay, those are, that's some tips, some thoughts, some perspectives, and now we're gonna do the next slide and you guys get to have your turn. About what you think are the keys to creating a strong, effective working body. And there's no wrong answers here. And we'll have everybody get a chance to speak and then we'll go around as long as we have things to, to keep on exploring on that. So let's take the, the PowerPoint off for a bit. And just hear from you. You guys have been around for a while. You know, I'm sure, a lot about what goes very badly. And what can, what makes things go well. So who would like to start?
Start, I, I think a key is. Respecting others' opinions. In other words, not being stuck in your own opinion. You have to be able to listen and have an open mind and listen to others' opinions.
Yeah. So both showing respect, but also being influenceable, like, oh, I could see it that way, too. I could consider another, yeah. Yeah, Amy.
I guess jumping off of that, being able to make a decision as a group, so. If you're used to operating independently, it can be a new experience to govern by consensus. So for us to function well, I think we all need to embody that.
Yeah, thank you. Joe?
Well, what comes to mind for me is to be an effective body is. Something different than what I experienced the last six years. So on the one hand. Ask anybody in Thurston County, and I was part of the majority on the port commission. So. And that's my self identification and. You know, on the one hand, it's kind of nice to be part of the majority because you might say, oh, we get our way. On the other hand. It's kind of a weight because you know that there's somebody that really doesn't agree with you, but they get dragged along. So, you know, it's uncomfortable. So going forward with. Commissioner Evans and Commissioner I L, my hope is that to be effective. That. You know, we're three individuals, we don't line up. On average, and in a certain way that we have good discussion and then votes and. You know, there is no regular majority. So that's my hope for. You know, an effective port commission. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that. Kind of goes along with some of the things that have been going on in the last few weeks is that. You know, we just need to continually prioritize. You know, what's important either to us individually or what's important to the community. So that. The perception is, you know, we're getting the right stuff done. And so, and that takes, that takes effort because. You know, if I ask Sam or when I talk to Sam, you know, we got a lot of different things going on at any one time. And so you have to prioritize.
Yeah, the timing, I think, to be doing your strategic planning right now is, is, seems really perfect. Because there are so many opportunities and, and how do you make sure that you're really choosing the right opportunity? Do you remember when Jim had that quote? He's like, what, what was it? Something like, management's job is to make sure that, you know, you, when you got the ladder against the wall, that they're making their way up the ladder. And the commission's job is to make sure it's the right wall. I thought that is a flipping great quote, because that is your job, like in the biggest, biggest level, are you looking at the right things? Yeah. So, so Amy, you just said something about coming to consensus and then Joe, you had talked about majority and minority. How, how have you, what, or let me just ask, what is it that you guys would like to have in terms of how you make decisions as a group? You do, you know, you're set up to work by parliamentary procedure. Of course, you can do consensus building as part of that. How, have you seen that work well?
I, I think we're, we're modeling some pretty good behavior at this point of being able to disagree and discuss. Inviting in minority opinions, whether it be in the meeting or outside of the meeting through our communications. The communication piece, I think, is gonna be really important to making it work well inward and outward communication from the commission. And the staff, so, and that, not to go off on a whole nother item that you didn't ask about Holly, but I think that that comes back to trust. We need to foster trust between the commission and the staff, between the commission and the public. And all that's related.
Yeah, and then commit, and then trust among each other.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, that you're not gonna get, think, think we're all on the same page and. Yeah, trust and transparency.
Yeah, how do you, how, what, what do you, what is your belief about how you create trust in a group, in this group?
Well, it's difficult because we can't speak to each other outside of these meetings. So I think that it's difficult to build trust. So we're only. So we're only relying upon the actions and words with, in these meetings and then where each of us go outside of these meetings. So I think that's just going to take a little more time. Um, I always, I think Sam says the same thing and maybe even Commissioner Downing. Uh, assume positive intent. Um, that's a preservation strategy as much as anything because assuming negative intent doesn't give you a very good life. So.
You'll sleep better anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, I think it'll just take time of us getting to know each other and, uh, holding space for an opinion that is not our own within these meetings. That's been my experience, uh, specifically on the homeless work group with the city of Olympia. When I held space for something that was not my own idea, when that person was not in the room, that's how the trust was built. So you have to earn it.
Yeah, well spoken. Joe or, or Mr. Iow, what do you guys think?
Well, I think that, you know, to build trust in, in, uh, amongst the commission, I think if, uh. Uh, you know, if we create and, and follow and respect the process and, you know, decision-making. Um, so we're not, you know, it's, it, nothing should be a surprise to any one of us that, you know, we, when we. You know, we're tasked as a, um, as our purpose as, uh, you know, economic development in Thurston County and, and. And those opportunities that arise are the ones we have right now and we, you know, we're, we'll be tasked to, uh. Um, manage those. Um, you know, I think, uh, just having a clear process so that we, uh, we all understand. Um, um, how we're going to get to the vision and that's, I mean, that's another thing, just understanding what the vision is and. And, and how we want to get there. And I, I, I think that's, that goes a long ways to building trust amongst the three of us.
Yeah. Yeah, it definitely, when you're clear on where you're going and what your purpose is, you can get, you can eliminate a lot of the, uh. Kind of more mundane back and forth. Joe, yeah, go ahead.
Well, um, along those lines. I think it's important when we can, and sometimes it's not, there's not a good way to do this, but, uh, to. Let people know. If we have a hidden agenda, I'm gonna give you an example of a hidden agenda, which is about to be no longer hidden. Okay, because I'm going to speak it. And.
Good job. Way to build trust. Go Joe.
Let's, let's just say, it's, it's a little bit, little bit hypothetical, but a little bit actual, which is, uh, let's just say. You know, my agenda is to start gearing up for reelection because I've got. In a year, I guess, or so, I'll be running for reelection. And so what's my agenda with that? Lately, I've been feeling that, you know, after this many years. That I call them the Port naysayers and I try to use a least unattractive term as possible. But anyway, the, the port, port watchers, let's call them that, that they have an opinion about a lot of different port things. I'm going to try to give a little bit more credence to their issues. Because they do, let's face it, they do have an outsized voice. And, you know, I'm going to try to bring people into the fold. So, um, I'm admitting to that being an agenda. So. If anybody on this Zoom call here, you know, sees, sees Commissioner Downing operating in a slightly different way. You know, that's, that's an agenda of mine. So that's just an example of me being forthright with, uh. The fellow commissioners, so they know where I'm coming from and they can build that trust.
Thank you. Anybody else want to declare a, a, a personal agenda at this time?
Collaboration. I think everybody already knows that.
Anything else? Okay, well, I love the comment too that was made about, uh, no surprises. And I think as you all are working with your strategic planning process, that'll help you really uncover where your agendas are and your hopes are. And your passions and what you think is best for the port. And, um, another thing that I heard was just when, and maybe we should, uh, just talk about the OPMA. And Joe, to your point about, you know, what, when you have. When you have members of the public who, who are showing up at the commission. It is so important that to recognize they have a voice, they have a right to be there. That's part of the heart and soul of the OPMA. And they're also a very small percentage of the total population. So then how do you make sure that you are honoring that voice while still not allowing the tail to wag the dog? So that you can really be, you know, representing the whole of the community. And we're going to talk about that more later on. Um, and also that you're squeaky clean on the OPMA, OPMA stuff, right? Like I just re, I just watched the video again. Have you guys been, you, you all did the training, right? You did that training, that you can do that 15-minute video. I, you know, I'd suggest watching it again. We can send you the link, but. I, I serve on different things and you really just don't want to go south of that because it does erode public trust for sure. Um, Sam, did you have anything you wanted to chime in about things that you've noticed from commissions and boards you've worked with that you think's been helpful?
I, I certainly think that, that, that no surprises doctrine is something that we all strive for and, um, and because. We are humans in a fast-paced world that, um, um, sometimes that, um, you know, uh. We, we might inadvertently surprise, uh, surprise one another and, you know, um, back to Commissioner Evans. Repetition of something that we use a lot at staff is to, to assume good, good intent and, um, a positive intent. And so, you know, if you are surprised, um, by something, it is definitely never, never mind in, intent to surprise the commissioners. You know, I may have forgotten, I may have been, you know, not, not gotten to it, uh, et cetera, and, and, and to, you know, grant that in, 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 in return. Think particularly in, in, in these times where, um, you know, our, our capacity is just, um, so stretched. So. Um, yeah, that, that we're all, we're all, uh, working towards that and to grant each other some grace and during, during these stressful times.
Well spoken. You know, it's occurring to me, another thing that I think, uh, is really helpful, which is to slow down and ask people. What, tell me more about what's going on there. Tell me more about your thinking. So like right now, Joe just said, hey, I've got. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be, you know, running again next year and I really want to bring those people into the fold. Don't do it now. And Joe, I'm just using this as an example, but either of you could go, well, tell me more. What, what exactly does that mean? Are you going to like be going out to dinner with those people or what are you thinking? You know, like you can ask each other. Don't, don't just assume, um, you get better discussions and you get a better sense of what the interests are. If you guys are familiar with interest-based negotiation, which is if you understand what the other person is thinking. It really helps to build trust and also makes for better quality decisions. So, um. You know, like ask, slow down and ask, tell me more. That's like should be your, I'll, I'll tell you another tip. That I learned from a lawyer who worked on a board that I facilitated for years. He loved conflict. You know, like some lawyers really do. But the way that he showed up in a meeting, when there was conflict, he would get this like crazy grin on his face and he would lean forward. Like this was the best thing ever, like a conflict, a disagreement. Like, so I would also encourage you guys, you know, sometimes we get scared with conflict or we get kind of backed up. So if somebody says, Amy, I really have, I really have questions about that, you know, if we can like lean into that with like. Well, let's hear it, you know, so thinking about leaning into your curiosity, leaning into conflict. You guys can, you'll go far. Okay, any other wisdom you want to, you want to put on the table? Droplets of things you've seen that have worked well?
I, I, oh, go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
I was just thinking of RBG and Scalia, that you don't have to be friends to have trust or. You don't have, you can still be friends even if you don't disagree when you have trust and friendship. So having that. That enjoyment of each other, even outside of our individual opinions.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Bob, you had another.
Yeah, I, well, I was just going to point out, you know, I think the, the commission that we have now is, uh, you know, uh, really. We have really good diversity here. I think we have three people from different backgrounds professionally, culturally and. And, you know, I think so, that's what's really going to foster good debates is, is the, uh, you know, the, the different opinions and, and. And being willing to bring those opinions forward in the conversation. I've, I've been, I've been involved with several boards that. Um, would have up to seven board members and, and if, you know, and, and all too often, one board member will take a lead or. And, and nobody will challenge that, even though we have a seven board. Seven board members, all with different thoughts, all with different opinions, all with different backgrounds. Uh, but, you know. Hesitate to, uh, hesitate to, uh, add to the conversation, let alone disagree, you know. So, uh, I think, I think having this diversity is, is good for us and, uh, it, it, it's going to bring a, a, a lot of good ideas.
I totally agree. That's the culture. So to reflect back like a culture in which you can openly disagree with respect, with curiosity. Right? To get the best, that's what you want. I do, you want not just, you, you want wise decisions. You want well-thought-out decisions. So. That's part of it is bringing that diverse perspective and, and really being, um, being willing to engage and not just be passive. And of course, it goes without saying, right? Showing up, having read your package. That kind of stuff. I don't need to go through that. Joe, did you have anything else for we shift gears?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Amy, Bob, good? Ready to transition? Okay. All right. Well, Sam had mentioned. Um, oh yeah, the, the, uh, concept of no surprises and how I, I know. I, I preach that one all the time, like executives do not like to be surprised by their boards. Or their commissions or their councils and councils do not like to be surprised by their executives. So we always do our best. And sometimes things go south. So we're going to shift to the next, um, the next topic, fa- the part two. There we go. So part two is the relationship. The commission and the ED working together as a team. And I'm going to explain what I mean by that. So Jim Darling gave you a, a, a beautiful and, and perfect little description of the distinction of your roles. So we're going to start with, uh, just roles, role clarity as a foundation, like having a good structure. So governance is the job of the commission, management is the job of the executive director. And the one way that we think about it is that the commission is. Not 30,000 foot, right? That's the heart of governance to be thinking long-term, thinking strategically, thinking about where you're going. And then the job of the executive director is to figure out the, the mechanism by which you get there. So I want to, I want to talk about some, uh, kind of more fine-grained stuff in there. So again, this slide is straight from Jim's stuff, but it's, it's perfectly, perfectly good. Next slide please. Perfectly accurate. All right, so roles and responsibilities. So commission at the government's level. Uh, they employ, they hire, they evaluate their one and only employee. And they direct the one and only employee, which is their executive director. And the director's in charge of management or operations. And then if you click that slide, Shayla. There, just click, there you go. Okay, th- this is an important thing to bear in mind also that the executive director is also responsible. For making sure that you are supported and informed in your work. So all of that work that staff is doing, Shayla and Sam and the managers to make sure that you can do your job. They do, they do that on purpose. As part of running an effective port is making sure that the commission is supported in their work. So that's, that's, uh, you know, one of those ways in which there's a complexity. There's some nuance to these relationships. Next, next slide. This is another, um, another image that was taught to me that I have found to be very useful. And this gets into the sense of what a team is. So obviously, the commission and the executive director have different roles and they have a different spot on the hierarchy. Like if you were going to do it like a little flow chart, you have the public, then you have the, the commission, then you have the, who, who basically you were serving on their behalf. You delegate to the executive director who serves on your behalf, who delegates to staff who served at her direction, delegation. But the, the experience you should be having in your meetings and outside your meetings is more feeling like a team. So different roles, different responsibilities, but one team. And there's a, a little, um, quote here that I got a thousand years ago, but it really, I think is so true. The dynamic is one of mutual interest in each other's perspective, a respectful and enriching dialogue about intentions, strategies and results. So you want to have that experience. I think what, what I would say to you, what I would suggest is that is the ideal experience. Where people feel relaxed and that, and the, the executive director can have confidence that you're going to stay in your lane. So that she can really hear and receive your ideas and you guys can think together. While, while you're also clear about your roles and responsibilities. Um, the reason this is a scale, like a teeter totter, is because, and you guys have seen this before, I'm sure, is. When it's balanced off to one side, it's a micromanaging, of the commission is micromanaging their executive director. And if you tip it the other way, you have a rubber stamp commission. Right? So you're, what you're looking for, you're sure you've heard those terms, right? What you're looking for is this experience of a balance. That's what you're aiming for. And you can feel it in the room because there will be laughter, there will be a lot of sharing of ideas. And then there will be a clarity of like, okay, now whose decision is this? Let's go back and see what we said about this. Let's make sure we know that we are actually. You know, doing our, our, you know, honoring the delegation that has been set up here. So does that make sense, guys? Yeah. Okay. So next slide please. All right. So I want to, I, I thought a lot about what I wanted to share with you and I thought I, I was just going to jump right into, to where I see. To typically people get into trouble. That you're delegating authority to the ED to manage the operations and hold the ED accountable. But, and one of the biggest challenges is to resist the temptation to get into operations. It is always, always, always the challenge of a governing body. In some ways, because it's easier to think about operations, it's juicier, it's more tangible. A lot of times the work of, of a commission is very heady, it's sometimes abstract. Um, but it's, it's so, so critical and yet it's so easy to get down into the weeds. So this is now your question I want to ask you. Why is it difficult to resist that temptation? And what are the costs? That's the question. We're opening the floor. Yeah, Amy.
We're really smart. We're really smart. We have really good ideas and we can fix it. We can do it better. And the cost is that we erode trust with the executive director and the staff by getting into their lane and telling them how we can do it better.
Yeah. So easy, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Joe or Bill, what do you think? Why is it, why is it hard? And what are the costs?
I'll go first.
Um, hey, Joe.
Give you a second there, Bob. But, uh, yeah, of course it's hard because. It's fun being a port commissioner and it's fun being involved in the day-to-day business of the port. So. You know, therefore you, uh, you know, get sucked into your favorite interests, shall we say. Um, so it's, it is difficult to, uh, you know, keep hands off, um, especially. You know, in the current environment when, uh. Citizens are writing to directly over this or that issue. You know, in best case, like somebody wrote and said, you know, some minor, minor deal, like why am I being charged? Like, why can't I keep the mask on my sailboat? Right next to the, the boat itself. I just forwarded to TJ, you know, and I'm done, done with it and so forth. Um, but not everything is quite that easy. So it is, it is a challenge to. you know, and I'm done, done with it and so forth. Um, but not everything is quite that easy. So it is, it is a challenge to, uh, keep hands off.
Yeah, especially when the people who are coming to you are the public and they're not discerning. They're, they're not thinking, oh, they're talking to you, Joe, and they have a thought about the port. And I think, yeah, go ahead.
Another example is, uh, you know, I got two emails this week from people about the, uh, that state level coordinating council for airports, you know, and somehow in the last meeting, they must have mentioned Olympia Airport and what we might do there. So people are, you know, so, you know, you feel obliged as a port commissioner to get involved in that issue and make sure you're not missing something, but you can get involved and still not, you know, write to Rudy or Sam and say this or that about it. Just that you want to monitor the situation. So you're ready for when it does come to the commission. When and then.
And what do you, when, when that happens, how do you typically respond? So I think we're ideally trying to funnel everything now directly to Sam, right? So we keep the unity of control. Isn't that where we're at?
Well, that's a, that's a loaded question.
That's what I heard in the last.
It's, it's, um, well, it's, talk about difficult. It's really difficult for, you know, poor commissioners to totally ignore emails from the public and send them to Sam or send them to Jenny for their response. Even though you want poor commissioner, you know, so on. So that's a tough one.
And what makes it tough? What, what makes, no, no, say, say what makes it tough.
Well, I mean, it's like, uh, people bring up, sometimes bring up semi-valid points. And again, you know, I want to be more responsive to the public. And, and, you know, sometimes that means doing something more than, uh, or more individual, because I mean, let's face it. I mean, Jenny and I are not on the same page on every issue. Or Sam and I. So, you know, I mean, that's the way it is. And so, you know, that's just a, you know, I'm, I'm just laying it out there as a, uh, you know, bone of contention. If you have a slide for bones of contention, this is one of them, which is, you know, how to respond to the public. You know, I get people to write to me year after year, like Dennis Langens, like, you know, uh, what's her name? Sharon Koontz? And so on and so forth. And, you know, pretty soon they wear you down and you feel like you need to respond.
Well, we'll, we'll talk more about that when we get to the public, but I think, I think we do need to resolve, if that's what this question about. So you guys are going to get it, stuff from, from the public. You, uh, you're gonna get it from, uh, potentially other partners in the community, right? And so you, you want to be a following the speaking with one voice principle. And you also want to make sure that you are, um, you know, upholding those, those delegation, you know, the, the principles of delegation. But it does get tricky when you also really want to appear or you want to be responsive, right? That gets really tricky. So Bob, go ahead and chime in. What are your thoughts? Why is it so easy to get, to get sucked in?
Yeah, it's, and I was trying to really think of something really different and creative than, uh, what Commissioner Evans brought up, but, uh, you know, really, it, it's been my experience, uh, uh, working with a number of boards of directors that, uh, I mean, that's, uh, you know, putting aside every once in a while, somebody has a special interest or a personal interest in a, in a particular project. But, you know, everybody always has a better idea on how, uh, on how things, uh, on how things should be run. And, and, you know, the cost of that can be significant. Uh, I'm just throwing out an example that, uh, using, or, you know, bringing an opportunity to the, the board or the commission, uh, the staff bringing the, uh, that opportunity. That takes time. It takes a lot of time and effort to, to put, to put the proposals or the, um, you know, proposals together. Uh, and if it's, if it's worthwhile, they would, I mean, if it wasn't worthwhile, they wouldn't put the time into it to begin with. So if we try to insert ourselves into, um, acting on, you know, acting on that or saying this, this is a, a better way to do it. Certainly we can, you know, we can say, well, the proposal as it is, isn't acceptable or it is acceptable. But to get in there and to insert yourself into doing it, um, it can, it can create misconceptions. And those misconceptions can, can build, um, can shoot down a project, can shoot down a perfectly valid opportunity. Uh, one misconception can ruin everything. And then all the work that you've done preparing for that, um, is gone. And I, I speak from experience on that. So, uh, that's, that's my answer.
Yeah, thank you. Sam, do you want to? Yeah, I saw your hand up.
Because I, I would like to add as, um, that, that it's important, uh, to, to, for, for me to stay in my lane too. And, and for, for, for staff to stay and stay in our line. And, and I would say that there are probably more opportunities for um, us as staff to, to imagine what a policy position is that the commission actually hasn't articulated than, than, than what, what, what anyone might think of off the top of their head. And so one of the things and, you know, um, kind of, you know, reflecting on, on my own, uh, processes. And then working, working with staff of, if there is a question that it appears that, um, uh, the commission may be trying to uh, give, you know, operational direction of like, then what is the strategic question? You know, it, it, because oftentimes there is a strategic question. And, and I think it's really important for me to be constantly thinking of, of, of that as well and not just assuming that, that there is a, uh, clear, clear direction or, um, or, or, or that, that the strategic direction is actually understood. So I, we need to stay in our lane a, a, as well. And, um, and so hopefully you will, you will find is that, um, oftentimes when particularly as I'm, uh, talking with you, uh, one-on-one about an issue, I will oftentimes be thinking about how, and, and I like that, that phrase that you use of how to abstract up. How, how, how do we take it from the particular circumstances of, of any one particular decision? But is there a strategic question or a policy issue at play here? Um, so I hope that you, you will find that in, in our one-on-one conversations. I'm kind of always on the look for that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I appreciate it too, how you thought how it's, it's not only, the question was about how, you know, commissions can get into operations, but I appreciate you actually flipped it. We can also sort of tell you, you should do your job.
Oh, absolutely. And, and trust me, there are opinions of, of like, mother commissioners need to stay over there. And I'm like, actually, there is a strategic question here.
Yeah. There's also times when you all will have moments where it's not going to be clear. And that's where, I mean, that, i- is it a governance level issue or is it operations? And if it's operations and you can, you can call Sam and say, I'm getting asked about this, what do I do? That's really appropriate because that's, you're, you're hiring professional staff to help you navigate that. And, um, so, you know, both her understanding about what has been delegated to her, but also just helping even counsel you on how do you deal with that person or, you know, as, as a commissioner who's trying to be responsive to the public. So you can always, you can always rely on her also as a resource for that. Okay. I do want to go back to that point that Joe, because it caught my attention when you said you sent, you forwarded it to, like, I think we should try and clear, make sure we're on the same page here. You forwarded some email about some questions somebody had to, to a, a staff member to, I think you said TJ, right? So is it, how do you guys want to do this? I, I thought that the last time we had talked and worked this through and, and we can nail this down and check, you always check, what did you already say? We might not have, we might not have spoken to this, but when you guys are going along in the world and you, and somebody, uh, has an operational thing they want to talk to you about. My understanding is where you have something you want to talk about, you send it to your one employee. That is what I thought you guys were doing. Do you see it? Did somebody see it differently?
I get what Joe's raising, which is that we all are here because we care and want to take ownership for the response that's going back to the people that are reaching out to us. Um, so maybe there's a happy medium of, uh, us responding, not just saying, hey, Sam, answer this, but a meaningful response that's speaking to the strategic direction of the commission as a whole. And looping in whichever Sam and whichever other person is appropriate. Um, I, I guess I wasn't clear that everything was just supposed to be forwarded to Sam. That isn't what I heard. Um, and that's not what I've been doing. Um, so, but I've been including Sam on my replies that are substantive. And at times I will reply to a citizen ma- many times individually when there's not something substantive to do. I don't know what Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Downing, what do you guys think? Or what are you doing?
Well, um, I haven't really responded with, uh, uh, I, I really just want to respond. What I've done so far is respond that I, I did receive that and, and recognize that, you know, I, 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 I didn't, I, I want them to understand that I didn't ignore it, but I don't necessarily answer any, um, any questions or, or, or issues.
And then do you, what do you do then with their question? Do you do it? Do you forward it to Sam or do you?
Well, so far the ones that I've gotten are include either the other commissioners or Sam, um, as well. So I, I don't think I've gotten any that were just directed specifically to me.
Okay. So you're responding. That makes sense, right? So I get, I have something in my inbox. I respond, hey, thank you, you know, here's our job. And then forward it to Sam, or I guess we have done it that other way, Sam, in the past where it was CC'd to you. How, how would you prefer it goes right now? What's your preference?
Um, certainly I think with, you know, what, um, uh, what, what I prefer is that, um, the commissioners send inquiries to, uh, to, to me about, uh, if there are operational questions and, and that, then I can delegate that out to, um, the, the, the relevant staff. And so, you know, uh, we, we did have a, um, uh, a process for, for inquiries, but it is like, you know, it, it, it may be apparent to you, oh, Rudy's gonna a- answer this or TJ's gonna answer this. But sometimes I have staff working on, on, on different things. So, you know, that gives me an opportunity to manage, uh, staff time, um, a- as well. Um, I, I get that there is a, um, a, a fine line on that. I'll use the example that Commissioner Downing, um, has on, um, you know, uh, somebody's like, why am I being charged to store my, my mask? He thinks to himself, you know, that's, that's obviously TJ's, um, court. And so I'm not going to, what, what I heard, heard him say, I'm not going to respond to you about our pricing policy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward that to, uh, to TJ and say, you know, TJ, you have, have some questions here. Can you, can you answer, um, this citizen? Um, no, I, I'm fine just being copied on those, those really type of, of, of operational things when you know very specifically that there is, um, uh, some, something about, you know, but, but it really does have to be pretty simple because I've seen other things of questions of, um, you know, uh, planning in, in, in new market or, um, uh, land use in new market. And we've got some really overlapping, um, uh, uh, delegation of, of who's working on, on what. And so it might, you, you might think to yourself as a commissioner, oh, Rudy's gonna answer that, that for me. When actually I have Alan working on, on, on that. And so that allows me the opportunity to delegate out to, to who really is, is working on it as well as to, uh, bring up any, any type of nuances to it.
I, I also think, and I think this is part of what Commissioner Downing is saying is, I, it is important to me to be able to meet with citizens or field comments from citizens as a, I feel that that's part of our role. Um, and if we're doing so with the understanding that, as you pointed out earlier, we have no power without the decision of the group. And if that's the voice with which we're listening, um, but I guess for me, that's important. If we were not allowed to speak with anyone, that wouldn't work very well for me. And I think that's part of what Commissioner Downing was. Is that Joe, kind of what, part of what you were saying?
No, that's pretty much true, Amy. Uh, the, uh, interaction I have with the public, it, it runs the gamut from, you know, when I get a hundred emails about, two hundred emails about Panatoni, I'm not going to respond to two hundred people. It's physically impossible. So that's at one extreme. Another extreme is, you know, somebody with a question about the boatyard, I just forward it. But then there are a lot of things in the middle that, that may have to do specifically with the commission and how it conducts itself. So, um, you know, I kind of agree with you that, uh, you know, what I can commit to is, uh, which I used to be more diligent than I am now, but what I can commit to is, you know, copying in Sam, you know, on any response whatsoever to anybody. So she sees what, what we are saying and, uh, I give Commissioner Zeta credit whenever I can, which is, I think she urged us to put a disclaimer, you know, how you have your signature page in your email and it comes up with your name and title. And then I put a disclaimer saying, please understand that any comments I make do not necessarily re- represent the commission as a whole. So that's on there. And it's kind of a disclaimer that, you know, what I just told a person is really, you know, my opinion only. I'm not speaking for the commission or the staff. So.
Yeah. That's another good way. And I appreciate what you're offering to CC Sam. And Sam, I wanted to push back on something you said a little bit earlier. Where you said that, you know, that Joe could then say to TJ, will you take care of this? Or would you respond to this? So I understand, but do you, do you see why that's a problem? Cause he can't, he cannot direct staff.
Right. Yeah.
Right. You only can, you only work as a body. So, so easy, right? That's why this stuff is tricky. It, it's not only that it's tempting. Um, in co-op land, I work with tons of food co-ops, like everyone wants to play store. We all do, and we all think we could do a better job. I mean, it's so challenging. And at the same time, it's really important to not go into that, but also sometimes it's just not clear. And of course you want to be responsive to the public. And, and Amy, to your point, you definitely can talk to people, all that you want, the more, the better. You can be, you know, you guys, that's, that's part of it is to be responsive to your constituencies. So it's just a matter of keeping the lines really clear and not undermining authority that you've delegated. Because when you do that, then you can also set yourself up for some legal challenges down the road because, um, actually in the business judgment rules that, that don't apply directly to commissions, but the principles still apply is it's not clear what you've delegated. And you don't want to go down that path. So we're gonna, you guys ready on this? Cause we have more. Okay. Next slide. Pop that up. Shayla. This is wonderful. All right. So we know the costs are about triangulation, confusion, people not staying on the same page and also undermining trust. And that we're gonna be just really working on transparency. And of course, everybody, it's fun. This stuff is interesting. That's why you, you, why you, you know, ran for the office. Okay. Next slide. So working together as a team, uh, clear roles and responsibilities, a, a healthy, a healthy group, uh, you know, governing body. I, I would be, it would be normal to hear somebody say, now, wait a minute, what have we said about that already? What, what's the policy say? What, i- isn't this a management decision? Those are the kinds of things you would typically hear. You should be listening for them and saying, uh, clear delegation. I mentioned the setting goals and monitoring performance systematically. That's why it's going to be a watershed. It's going to be huge to have you working with Jim Darling this year. Cause it'll, it'll just help you guys not only get clear on what you're, where you're going and what your outcomes are, but it'll also change the dynamic of kind of the, the idea of the day or the passion of the day or the drama of the day or the trauma of the day. So when you get that dialed in, it's gonna, it's gonna be a game changer. Showing respect and appreciation that of course sweetens the pot, makes more fun, makes for better relations. Uh, these last two are going to be a segue to our next section, which is that the recognition of the realities of organizational capacity. It's really common for boards and commissions and councils to un- common for boards and commissions and councils to un- to overestimate the amount of time and capacity that your staff actually has. And I'll tell you, especially in since the pandemic, people are stretched so thin. So just remember that everything you do can impact everybody else downstream. So be super, you want to be so, so disciplined and careful about that. Because everything you do is like one more, one more, and you don't really want people to keel over. And then knowing how to deal with emergent issues. So we want to keep on working on what are those pathways so that you can feel confident in them? So that you can have consistency in them and then you will, it'll make your lives easier. Okay, so those are some thoughts. Keep those in mind. And I'm going to turn it over to Sam. I think the next slide is, I I think we want to now just make sure, and we want to, I wanted to give Sam a moment to just make sure you understood kind of the the breadth of what your operations is doing right now. So you're about to enter a strategic planning process, but they're already in motion with their goals, the budget, tasks, the staffing, the teams, the supervision, timeless deliverables, reporting. I could have gone on. I made this slide. But but like the monster, which is your port. That's what we're going to talk about now. So, Sam, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Holly. And yeah, so, um, you know, we we do have a strategic plan now that I I would refer to as being, you know, aspirational in in nature. It sets out some of our values and and uh, focus areas for the port. And we're trying to get to a much clearer prioritization of what are we going to be working on within within a timeframe? And at the same time, been working with the the commission for the past couple of years and really laying out, you know, what are the things that you want us to accomplish next year and then incorporating those into the budget? So the things that are already in in the budget that are things that we have underway and the list is 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 pretty hefty. So if you can go to the the next slide. So, um, I I also went back and listened to the work session that we had on uh, January sixth and 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 really kind of took what the US individual commissioners were were saying. And there was a a big consensus on working together to, you know, how how do we form a a good working relationship as a commission and how do we set this strategic direction? And so from that, we have really, you know, we're investing a lot of time and and resources and including energy into this upfront part of 2022 to uh, take us into a what I would term as a more rigorous level of strategic strategic planning. So a lot of things going into that behind the scenes. And that includes, you know, um, a a capital investment plan, modifying our budget process, uh, looking at our debt portfolio and what our financial performance is. There are also a lot of upcoming policy level, um, issues that we we need to be providing you with the data and summary and briefing on some really complex topics. And and so those include, you know, we're we'll be moving forward on on the five member commission, the Oya Hotel. We also have a lot in our group come in as being related to Bud Inlet. And that includes everything from Capital Lake to Shute's Estuary. Uh, both the EIS and the funding and governance down to Harbor Patrol. There are some real issues with with Harbor Patrol. What is the presence on the water? To a commission, a policy question of surplusing the vessel integrity to to the sheriff's office. What does that mean? Back to Commissioner Downing's question, I know that there's been a lot, some email traffic about the coordinating uh, aviation coordinating commission. And and then POCAP role, et cetera. We're also placing a lot of more emphasis on government relations, lining ourselves up for what legislative agenda at both the state and the federal level. Um, as well as then, you know, really setting us up to have some joint meetings with Tom Water, Olympia and Thurston County. Next slide. Got lots of planning already underway and kind of taking it to 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 the next level. Environmental, we have quite a bit of environmental things that are happening, including plans for remediation of uh, Bud Inlet. That includes stakeholders and potentially liable partner partners besides the port. Our ongoing environmental compliance, sea level rise, looking at electric vehicle feasibility and the support for the oldie solar project. Um, outreach and communications, a lot of ongoing things, just like, you know, regular social media postings, our our marketing plans, but particularly this is our centennial year, have lots of uh, events that some are our ports events and some of the 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 events that we sponsor or our partners events. Next slide. Capital projects, a whole lot of them. And and I would tell you this was, this list was developed at the you know, we we started on it in like, you know, August of last year when, oh, we had a hope that maybe there was some return to normal and we'd have some, you know, budding capacity and then Omicron hit and we had some staff turnovers. And I would tell you that this this list will need to be pared down and we will need to be realistic about what we can accomplish in 2022. Next slide. And then we have a lot of what I'm just going to kind of internal processes and and ongoing initiatives. And that's everything from looking at, we really have a a need to update some of our policies. We're taking a deeper dive into uh, our lease portfolio, continuing with unified maintenance. We we have quite a bit of staff recruitment to do this year and then onboarding and training and things that 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 come with that. Uh, we are not alone in in that and talking with my my peers in the in the community. There are just I I am, I am have trepidation about our ability to recruit in 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 this environment. And I think that is, again, we're we're not alone in in that. We have major business initiatives that require quite a bit of time besides just doing the business analysis. There might be other land use considerations and things. Certainly, we have the execution of the Panatonic lease option that will be coming back for commission consideration, like the Secretary of State Archive Building. And then our ongoing engagement with with partners and those are are things that we stay connected in into the community. And, you know, I like I I serve on the board of the Thurston County Chamber. We have staff members that serve on various boards throughout the the community. Those are good things for us to do. It helps us stay connected to the community fabric. And it does take capacity to do that. And and I'd say, and all of that is on top of running our businesses. You know, we have the day to day checking people in at the marina, making sure you know, we're tracking where ships are, when they're gonna gonna dock, how's the hoist operating? Now, do we need to do snow removal at the airport? So there are kind of the 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 higher end uh, projects and and initiatives. And then there's just the day to day churn of of keeping our businesses operational. That's it, Holly. I tried to say consigns.
You did great. Okay, gang, this is your moment where you can be practicing appreciation. Ready? Yay. Smile. You go, yay, good job. And then to everybody who's on the call right now, all the staff, like, holy moly. That would be my, as your outside person. That's a lot. Okay, so given that, let's go, uh, where are we? Go ahead and hit that next slide. All right. So we've, we've really been talking a lot about that relationship of respect and the being on the same team with the executive director. Again, you're one employee, you're you're one, she she is your direct report. Speaking with one voice, trying to aim for no surprises, distinguishing between the, you know, your job is in at the governance level and and Sam's job as as your as your manager. Do you have anything else that you would like to add that you think is important? Um, either issues or or really suggestions for what you'd like to see in this relationship and what you think will make it work well? Everybody willing to just jump in with maybe one or two thoughts? Yeah.
I I think I I think the really the most important thing for the commission and maintaining that good relationship is understanding the role of the commission. And and the executive director, understanding the role of the commission and you know, I think there are certain, there's probably four or five top key points that the commission needs to focus on. And and, you know, if we if we can stay in that, in that in that field, then I think our relationship will be very productive.
Great, thank you. Amy or Joe?
Um, I, I'll go ahead. And I think the obviously, the key is to keep lines of communication open. I think Sam does a great job, you know, touching base with the different commissioners on a regular basis. Really does a great job in terms of letting us know what are you know, issues coming up, potential issues or actual issues. And you know, I just think that you know, I'm a big advocate for more communication within the commission. So that we have a good working relationship, the better the commission is able to understand and interrelate with each other. The easier it's going to be on Sam. She can just kind of march forward. And she hears something in the meeting and that message does not change. And, you know, we make a decision and then we go forward. You know, that's really you might say huge progress compared to, you know, where we've been in the past. It's very important for the commission to speak in one voice and for everybody to get on board. Once a decision, you know, has been made, we don't spend, we spend zero time. You know, second guessing. You know, the past, past decisions or what have you, unless there's new information and a reason to go look at something, which is fairly rare. So.
Thank you. Beautiful. Amy, what are your thoughts?
I really agree with that last point about once we make a decision together, then honoring that. Uh, I just wrote down trust. It's the same thing. We have to trust each other, but we have to trust Sam and Sam has to trust us. And what, as we build that, that will allow us to utilize each other's strengths and talents more effectively um, and work as a team, as you were pointing out with teeter totter. So yeah, clear expectations, like Commissioner Iall said, just knowing what everyone's role is and and doing it.
That was a beautiful summary, too. I think you got all the points. Well done. Uh, I will, I will just add that uh, one other piece, which is to not overpack your agendas. I appreciate what Bob said about, you know, what are your main issues and staying with that and doing them well? Because really you can't, and I don't even think it works very well to be emailing back and forth, one for one, because of the OPMA. Because you can't really have a discussion or that would be, you know, against the OPMA, but also um, you know, usually people don't have particularly constructive discussions over email in my, in my opinion, when I see boards, they'd work better when they're in a group. And so making sure you have enough time to deliberate and that has to do with doing good agenda design. So that's really on the on the plate of the chair and the executive director to do good agenda design. And for all of you to follow the processes, right, reemail Sam, say, I'd like this on the agenda. It goes to the commission. So we need to map that out. We're not going to do it today. But just carve out the time for you to do your critical thinking. They say, they say time is the commission's most precious resource. And the value you bring is your thinking. That is what you bring. So thinking and time, that's it. Not mucking around. As Joe has pointed out, we've had a lot of mucking around and we we want to go high. We want to go, go big. Okay. Good. Anything else? All right, let's move on. We're, ooh, we're doing great on time. We're on our last topic. So Shayla, next slide, please. All right, working to serve. We've talked a little bit already about the relationship between the commission, both as a whole and then its individuals and the public. I can do a whole workshop on this. Uh, but for today, we're going to just hit some high points. Because it is really tricky and important. So next, next slide. You're there in service to the public. There are specific ways that the public informs the work of the commission. Now granted, in the OPMA, you don't have to you know, have any time of your meetings for the public, but you do, and most elected bodies have a public comment period. So next slide. So let's talk about the four ways in which you typically are informed by the public so that you're you're acting on behalf of them. So next slide, please. These are the four main ways. The one on one conversation, sometimes those are in email, but it's you and a and a small group or a member of the public. And you're having a conversation about the port business. And you guys have already done a great job of distinguishing that you don't speak for the port. You just, I mean, you can speak for the port on the decisions that you know have been made. But you don't get to, you know, speak on behalf of the port for things that that are your deliberation. Certainly nothing that was in a closed session, right? But just always making sure that that there's not even the appearance that you speak for the port. That's so easy to have somebody say after you have met with them, oh, yeah, well, so and so sad, blah, 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 blah. And then and then things can get really wonky. So one on one conversations are terrific. They build relations. They build trust. People feel heard and you can get good ideas. Like I actually, I I'm a believer. I think I think people have a lot of good ideas. Public comment in your meetings. I know you're going to come up on that with the rules for resolution. Stefan with Ann. Um, you know, it's important. But it is exactly what it is. It's a time for people to come and say what they have to say. And for us as elected officials, I I serve on a on a small board. Um, you know, to listen with respect, that whole thing about respect, that's my job. My job is to listen with respect, not to debate it with them, not to get engaged, but to show that I'm fully listening. I'll tell you a pet peeve I have. I think it is so crazy, we're crazy rude. And I've seen this where a a member of the public will be there and you can tell that the the counselor or the commission is and the board or the board member is not listening. I just think you've got to remember it. Not only can everybody see you and it's being recorded, but like they can tell if you're reading your email, like they can tell. So you want to really show up like with your faces, like, oh, you're listening, showing your listening face. You know, with genuine, I mean, you're not faking it. You want to genuinely listen. Uh, but it is super important that you're present for that. Public hearings, you you do as a commission, especially for the port, you will, there are a lot of public hearings in your processes because of the types of work you do. So I, when I first started working with the port, there was a lot of confusion about the difference between public hearings, public comment and public engagement. Those are different things. So public engagement is, for example, when you did your 2015, 2050, sorry, your Vision 2050, you had public engagement. That can be like, we're going to do a survey or we're going to do focus groups and we're in, you know, go to different meetings or have a town hall. Um, that's all public engagement. And that's something you're typically doing as part of a process, some part of some kind of planning process. And that's different than the legal types of stuff that happened with public hearings. They there is whole different, a whole different, you know, different creature. So you guys get, does that make sense to distinguish these different things? Okay. Next slide. All right, the one voice principle applies again here. Ideally, you, when you're speaking, you're you're speaking, the the board loves cookies because you've already taken a vote on that matter and you're clear. There will be times when you're saying different things. You just need to make sure you're very clear and distinguishing um, that you don't speak for the for the whole. You might at some point want to have a want to have a conversation because I know you all have committee assignments. So I want to, I want to flag for you, at some point, you might want to talk about how you read that needle because you are there representing the port, right? Like I've been thinking about this for a while on your behalf, like, how do you, how do you navigate this? So that, that's something to bear in mind. Then next slide. Okay, this, this is, we're going to move right into the principles you think are important to uphold as individuals and as a body. This is how do you want to show up to the public? And. I I'll give you a couple of, of just quick thoughts. One is that when I think about public engagement, my, the first thing that I believe is that you start with gratitude. Like I feel grateful that we have a democracy. I feel grateful that people are giving voice and that's always my starting position. I feel, thank, I thank people right away. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for speaking up. Then the second thing is that I root it appropriately. I don't want to give somebody a runaround. I want to send them to where they need to go. So, oh, you're really concerned about that. Why don't you go ahead and, and, you know, call, you know, call somebody at the port. Here's the number. Talk to them. That's the, I hear you. You know, so you're giving them compassion and you're showing that you're listening, you, that you care as a human. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, people want what they care about most is that you, that they're respected and heard. So you would hear it, you acknowledge it, and then you root it carefully, like to Sam or to the appropriate, you know, staff person, again, where you're just saying, go, go ye over there. And then if where you're getting, I, I thought I heard somebody say, where you got panatomi things and I, I think it was, you know, a hundred in my email, then you do need to make sure that your executive director is aware of that and, and that it's getting hot. So if stuff's getting hot, you need her to know and the, and then it's staff's job to manage that heat. You do not want to make that heat worse. And, and boy, if, if media calls you or somebody is quoting you and suddenly you're creating a firestorm or you're undermining a project or creating a legal problem, that is not a good thing. So don't do that, right? If things are getting hot, you need to like, oh, like let Sam know. And if it's also her job to let you know if things are getting hot, so you don't get surprised out in public, not knowing that something is going down. So those are just, that's a typical little spiel I give to people on kind of public engagement for letters. I'll send you guys some samples of, of letters. Perhaps you can see how to, you know, create a good tone. But I want to hear from you. What, what are the principles that you think are to uphold? And you can stop, share. Floor is open. Yeah.
I guess I'll go first. You know, I think. Dealing with the public and, you know, interacting with the public, the. We, we all need to. Have at least, you know, a minimum amount or, you know, a general understanding of, you know, emotionally intelligence. People, when they, when they're, when they talk to you, they, you know, or if they, especially if they have an issue or. You know, they have a, an interest that they want you to, to, to look into. You know, the, the most important thing and, and especially like if they have a complaint or something, you know. Quite often, people don't really want action necessarily. They don't want you necessarily to solve their problem. They want you to listen. They, and, and the, the better listener you are. The more you can learn from that person and, and then, you know, bring it back to the commission or the, you know, the organization and, you know, help solve a problem maybe, but. You know, I know, I, I know, talking with people, if I talk with people and I just maybe just telling them, oh, boy, I really, really don't like the way the board acted on this, on this one. You know, I'm not necessarily asking them to give me the answer or to give me the solution right then. It's just I, listening is such a, such a big, a big, a big issue there. So.
Yeah.
Knowing when, knowing when, when do we respond and when to just listen is really important.
Yeah, I think the longer I've been alive, the more I've realized they don't want to hear what I have to say. Like, really, they want to know that I get it, you know? I use that term all the time and I say it in honesty. I get it. I get, I get that. I hear you. Yeah, Amy.
Well, Bob's been married a long time and we now know why, because what he just said. No, I mean, I completely agree with everything he said. I think that's such a fundamental to. You start to realize the themes are the same, whether it's in your personal life, your professional life, your political life. People, validating people where they're at is the most important part. And if we start with that. I am an action person. So for me. Helping people be seen and then following that with an action, whether that action is, here's Sam, she's going to help you, or whether that action is, we're not talking about the airport right now, but when we are, I'll listen to your feedback and keep track of it. Or whether that's, hey, commissioners, we need to do something about this right now. Closing that loop. And then always, this has been coming up in our conversations with a number of topics. What is best for the port, the public and the environment and how those, putting that in the front of mind, because it's easy to get derailed into what might be good for an individual because you care and you're compassionate towards their circumstances. And so centering back on what our, what our mission is and what our purpose is as port commissioners is to be good stewards of the port and the public. And. That's helped me thus far and I think will help moving forward. But Bob, I mean, seriously, Bob, my, my counselor couldn't have said it better.
I know, Amy, that was really well spoken. Thank you for that. Well, well said. Yeah. Joe, how about for you?
Well, I think that. Amy and Bob, you know, synthesized really well. You know, it's hard for me to, I've heard that said many times, that people want to be heard more than they want answers. So they just want to be heard. And so I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as. We interact with people as port commissioners. So I think that's important. You know, I think integrity is important. You want to hear, you want to hear what. People say to you that are coming to the port, but you also want to be aware of. The thousands of people that voted for you and the positions you took and, you know, what it was, what it is that got you elected and, you know, you have to stay true to those things. The only time I run into a problem is when some Republican voted for me and then they subsequently find out that I'm a Democrat and go, oh, my God, you know, anyway, but that's, of course, the port is nonpartisan. So, you know, that kind of thing is going to happen no matter what. But I just think that integrity is important, being responsive and, and being a good listener, as my fellow commissioners have said.
Beautiful.
I had one more thing, too, is. People aren't really interested in having their minds changed. They, you know, if they have, if they have, if they have an issue or an opinion, let's say if they have an opinion on a, on a certain topic and they go to a meeting, whether it's a public hearing or they go in for a public comment, they're not going in to that meeting to, to have their mind changed or to, you know, change their own point of view. They're going in to have their own opinion validated. That's what, then they're going to look for things to, to validate their own position. So I, I, I just, I found that to be, you know, if you're mindful of that, that. Can avoid some arguments.
Yeah. And, and it, I think. I'm knowing how much energy to give on certain things, you know? I think if, if sometimes, like you say, if they, if somebody is coming in with this strong position, like, for example, it's, you know, we're, we're living in a time when it's like government is corrupt and I'm here to just tell you how corrupt you are at each meeting. It is almost like sometimes where you, you're just going to have to hold that that is a perspective they are here to share, but you don't have to engage that, you know, because their perception of corruption may not be something you can actually influence, except to just continue like, like Joe said, with integrity, with following the rules and with your own respect, being in a place of respect. Amy, did you have another point?
Well, I just think you touched on this with the privilege to live in a democracy and I feel like if we are doing a good job of governance, no one should be perfectly happy with us because we will have weaved together all of our constituents' points of view and. That's exciting and that's what makes it interesting work is, is doing that. So, yeah.
Yeah, you're here. And that you're there not just to advance the, advance your agenda or the agenda of an individual, you're there to think higher. You're there like, what's the good of the whole? What's the mission of our port? What's the good of our community? Not just the people who voted for me or not just my pet project or my neighbor's project, but you have a civic duty. You have a duty, which is to uphold the, the vision of the whole, you know, and the interests. And sometimes those are conflicting and you'll have to, you'll have to work it out. I, I think that this issue about that, I think we might even get a, an opportunity to pay attention here. I'm going to let Sam, I want to see if you want to add into this conversation. Actually, I'm going to let you do that first and then I, I have a closing comment. But. Did you want to?
Yeah, sure. I, I, I think that this is one of the most challenging issues of our time, you know, whether it is with the port or any other public agency in that. And that people are, I, I do believe that people want to be heard and they also don't want their, their minds changed at, at the same time. And those, those things are both true. And I think there are some people that don't engage at all because they're afraid of being shouted down or, or intimidated in that, that our civic space has, has a lot of, a lot of challenges right, right now. I think it's also. Very difficult to. Acertain. What, you know, what is the public, what is the opinion of, of the public and that some of the, the tools that we, we use by taking public comment or things, those give us a sliver of, of, you know, one piece of data, but they certainly probably aren't as. You know, a, a, another modality such as doing, you know, statistically. Defensible surveys would give you a whole other insight. And so it's that, and all that, we all have to make decisions in the face of having imperfect data. Like, I don't think we will ever have, like, this is what the public thinks, because, you know, even if you, even if you were able to ascertain that at one, one moment in time, it would change within a few minutes. And so it's, it's, it's a tricky business and, and that's why you're the electeds.
Yeah, thank you. And any other comments people have on this? Well, I think that how you are conducting your business, you can definitely show and model respect and civility and disagreeing with, with, with respect. I know that when I run public meetings, because I do quite a bit of that, I, I do set expectations for, and not that everybody always follows them, but like, we're here because we want everybody to be heard. That's why we're here, to be able to listen to each person. So what that means is we're all going to have a chance to be heard and we're going to say, try, everybody try to say it in a way that just maintains civility in the room. Again, not that that always happens, but that's certainly what I think we are desperately needing to model right now, is that we can have disagreements and have them be nonviolent and have them be respectful. So.
I can say one thing on that, Holly.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that if, again, if we're resetting the culture and we want everyone to be heard, that doesn't always equate to the rules and procedures of everyone's talking all the time. So I think that making sure that we're being clear on that as well as far as best, best practices when we are committed to making people feel heard. I, yeah, I guess that's all on that for now, but I think that's important to keep in mind. It's easy to get derailed sometimes on to what people's version of that might look like, but if you're committed to the underlying intent of making people feel heard, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to look a certain way.
Yeah. And you know, the, this is a place to double check with your rules for resolution. I was chairing a meeting recently and we had members come out of the public there and get really starting to. To not know, they didn't know what the protocol was. Each person gets three minutes to speak. They get uninterrupted time to speak and then the next person goes and they, they just, they were young and they were on fire. And, you know, afterwards or during the meeting at some point, you know, then they wanted to chime in and interrupt. I mean, it was like, okay, brand new. I just had to feel like, okay, I need to remember this is like my, my 27-year-old and they, who's never been to a public meeting. Like, I tried to just keep that in mind. And so I was just very like, let me just explain to you how this works. So you guys are going to have to be super solid in like, just making sure you're modeling and supporting people. Three minutes a person, the ding rings. The OPMA, by the way, does also have some procedures for when things get way out of hand. So you might want to freshen yourselves up on that. So I want to shift gears because there's one last thing before we close up and it has to do with emergent issues because we haven't finished that conversation. And I think Joe has an emergent issue with the, with that lease. So as you enter that discussion, because we're going to wind up my part, be paying attention to what have we delegated already to staff? To our executive director. What about this, if you can abstract up, actually does live at the policy level, making sure you're finding out and being in touch with where staff is on it, which I heard Joy wants to do. And what is, is there a decision to be made or is it just something that you want to be aware of? So be thinking about what is the kind of that means and distinction talked about? I mean, I have no idea what you're about to say, Joe. So I'm just trying to say on these things that, that are coming up that are emergent, like how do you hold the container for that in a way that doesn't spin you out? That's, that's my whole point is just to pay attention. Okay, so gang, that was it. I have a final slide, but it will just, you want to flip on to that? This is it. It's a swooping. We're wrapping up. Your next session is with Ann, who you're, if you haven't seen her work, she's, she's a hoop. So that's with Jurassic Parliament, February 9th, 9:00 AM to noon. And then any other closing comments? I see it's 4:20. So we're actually getting done a little bit early so that you can have time for your additional agenda items. So go ahead and put the slide down. Anything else you guys would like to say about how the session, anything that left as feeling unresolved or something that was a helpful?
I appreciate your energy, Holly. You're obviously a skilled listener, but it comes through. You really hear what people are saying. So it helps to distill it for everyone, myself included. So.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate you being here, Holly, and. Great session and I, I've learned quite, quite a lot. So thank you.
You bet.
Well. Good session, Holly. Very enjoyable. I always enjoy attending sessions where you are the MC, so to speak. I think this was very interpersonal and so the timing was good in terms of giving the participants an opportunity to voice their truth and compare and contrast with each other. So it's a good foundational get together.
Hey, thanks, Jeff. Sam, did you have anything else you'd like to say?
Um. I, I'd like, thanks for noticing that, that commissioner, because we really tried to design this. I feel like, you know, some of these initial work sessions that we, we are pushing a lot of information to, to, to the commission and we really wanted to, to create this to where you had an opportunity to interact with each other and, and knowing that, you know, we just, we had this great plan to begin the year with, you know, really you all having the opportunity to spend time with each other and with. That, you know, some key leadership in the, in the organization and that didn't get a chance to happen. And, you know, it's probably not quite as great on, on Zoom, but I'm, I'm glad you felt. And, you know, it's probably not quite as great on, on Zoom, but, um, I'm, I'm glad you felt like you had the opportunity to interact with each other, because it was really a, a lot behind the, the design of today. And, um, I'm glad and, you know, hopefully these COVID numbers will go down and at some point we will actually be able to be in a room together.
That would be great.
Yeah. Well, thank you all and, uh, I will see you soon and, and, uh, staff, great to see your names up there. I sure appreciate you so much. And we'll talk to you soon.
All right.
Bye.
Okay, Joe, do you want to start the conversation on our, uh, final agenda item?
Um, sure thing. Thank you, uh, Chairman Bob. So it came to our attention, uh, we got this letter on December 9th from Nick Carey, the general manager at K G Y. We paraphrase, paraphrase that they're, they put together a purchase and sale agreement with Glacier Aviation for the purchase and redevelopment of K, KG's wise, KG wise building right out there on the point. And he goes on with more detail. Um, he's not specifically, I guess, asking for anything. But the reason why I think there's two reasons why this comes to the commission level. One is that you know, they've, they've sent the letter to the commissioners and Sam, but also, when you're talking about North Point and you're talking about Destination Waterfront, where it's quite a bit of work has been done. And people have weighed in on that and we have, uh, you know, survey results and what have you. K G Y property is smack dab in the middle of that. And so I feel like it needs to, uh, come to public recognition. And so two things, one is we want, want to respond to K G Y in some fashion. And two is, you know, I feel like we should give the public some opportunity for input, whether that be simply having on a commission agenda. I don't, I'm not really suggesting any kind of public hearing or special meeting or what have you. But because of the fact that it's tied to Destination Waterfront and because of the fact that we have responsibility to get back to our tenants when they have a, an idea about either extending their lease or selling their property before the end of their lease. Um, I'm sure that there's, uh, procedures, uh, governing this. So I just wanted to, you know, bring it to my fellow commissioners' attention and, um, ask Sam, you know, if we could not, uh, and maybe the ball's already rolling. So in other words, Sam, if the ball's rolling already, great, but, uh, I don't know this for a fact. And so, you know, I think we should get the ball rolling and I don't want to say a word about, obviously there's, I can think of three or four potential outcomes, but I'm not prepared to, you know, voice my own opinion or talk about outcomes, but I think that somehow we need to respond to K G Y and I would ask staff to, you know, figure out what the next steps might be in this, uh, process.
Commissioner Evans, you have any, anything you'd like to add?
Um, I think there's two prongs to this, uh, one being the communication piece and kind of what we were talking about earlier where when a citizen reaches out, we want to make sure we're closing the loop. And we also want to make sure that staff is timely responding. Um, and then I think the other piece is the actual outcome of the lease and what the plan for the property is. And, um, I guess I would look to staff for some feedback on whether or not that loop has been closed from a communication standpoint. And then, um, what we as a commission, speaking with one voice, um, where we, where we're headed with our direction as far as what next steps are. I think it's hard in a situation like this. You know, K G Y, if they don't sell the property now, it's probably not worth much. But it's not worth much without a lease and Mike Thielen, if he doesn't get it now, he would have to go out to a competitive RFP process. So again, putting on that what's best for the port and the public. I think that we just have to zoom out and I guess look to the staff for further direction and, and our own strategic priorities as commissioners as well. But, um, that's how I'm looking at it is, uh, Mike Thielen has a vested interest and Nick Carey has a vested interest and those are important. And we need to make them feel seen and heard, like we have discussed in this meeting and we need to timely communicate with them. And then how we proceed is a separate issue as to what's best for the port overall, based on Destination Waterfront, based on staff recommendations, et cetera.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I, um, I agree, Joe, you mentioned the processes. I think there's, um, there, there must be, uh, there must be a process. I'm sure there's, uh, you know, we have governing documents with the lease and, uh, you know, how, how, how the, how the lease will be, um, either extended or terminated at the end of the lease, how, you know, how all that goes. And it would be good to know where, uh, where staff is with that. And, um, I, I'll, I'll give Sam a opportunity to chime in for a minute if you'd like, Sam.
Um, so, uh, staff has been in contact with, uh, both Mr. Thielen and with, uh, Nick Carey of, uh, K G Y. Um, I think the, uh, part of the issue is that, um, I, I don't believe that there's actually been a formal request from, uh, any, uh, from, from our current tenor to about assignment, uh, of, of the lease. Staff members have spoken with, with Mr. Carey about, uh, we believe that the, the, um, there will be a process, um, uh, coming up, uh, at some point without really having a, a timeline about what the, the future uses of, of that property are. And, um, so, so we have, have, have been in contact with them. I think that, um, you know, it is, um, there, there are a lot of complexities, uh, to this, this issue. And what I want to assure you is that, you know, um, we, we are, uh, addressing those at the, um, lease portfolio, uh, management, uh, a, a point of view that, you know, there, there are absolutely, you know, rights to assign that, uh, the lease, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's an automatic extension of, of the lease. And, um, so, um, that's the, the, the kind of, you know, as we, we look at this, this overlap between, uh, management and, and governance, I think if I were to, to abstract this up is that, um, the, the question before the, the commission is, is, you know, not really about the particulars of, uh, any one lease, but more the, um, you know, is the, is, is the commission wishing to entertain proposals or having staff entertain proposals about use in this particular area or is the commission, commission wishing to do something else?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, you know, I don't think, uh, I don't think we're looking for, for any of that today. I think, uh, Commissioner Downing's request was really to, to, you know, to get it on a, on an agenda for one of our meetings. And, and I really think the, the next step is an update, you know, so that we, you know, we can address all of those things you're talking about today. Or at least understand them and understand where we're at. So, uh, yeah, I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not questioning what staff's done so far, or I don't, I don't think Commissioner Downing is either. I just think, you know, an update at this point is, is really what we're after. Is that, is that correct?
Well, yes and no, uh, Chairman IL. I mean, yes, I would like an update and I guess I feel like if the commission got a letter from K G Y saying we want this, this and this. To me, Sam, it's pretty clear that they want to do a deal with Thielen when he says we've signed a purchase and sale agreement. That's pretty clear that they're moving down a certain road and it's incumbent upon us to give them a response. Like fill out so and so form please and send it back. Or, you know, you're premature in putting together a purchase and sale agreement without a new lease or a lease reassignment. I mean, there's a lot of things. So I don't know, I'm kind of in the dark as far as where this is. And secondly, the leases are an interesting thing. I mean, everything from consent calendar, we ratify a lease to, you know, big giant deal like Panatoni where we have an interlocal agreement and you bring it to the commission, we talk and talk and we put something together. So there's a, a wide range of leases in terms of, uh, you know, you might say their importance and when it rises to the commission level. So I would submit to you that it's a little bit of a gray area. Um, I'm suggesting to my fellow commissioners that, you know, this might or might not be a hot button issue. Because you've got a building, right? Again, smack dab in the middle of Destination Waterfront. And what is the future of that? I mean, we know the lease runs out in two or three years. I can't remember the exact number. At which time, you know, we could just let it run out like we've let other leases run out. And then, then I'm not sure what happens to the building. Or we can, you know, get involved and we can, you know, make something happen in a certain way that might tie in with Destination Waterfront. So, so I think that the, uh, I mean, sometimes you just sit back. I mean, sometimes you're proactive and you make things happen in a certain direction that is, is good for the Port of Olympia. Other times people come to you with ideas and those ideas have to be responded to. Um, so, you know, I guess I would say that, uh, you know, I don't want to get over involved in, in operations. I just like to see something happen. That's either a collaborative discussion between the parties or a statement from the port that, you know, this is the course we're going to take. But I think that if you take the latter approach with the port, this is the approach we're going to take. I mean, I kind of think that should, you know, come to the commission and get a little public airing, because to me, to me, it's a big deal. I mean, K G Y, that building is extremely historic. Um, you know, people might feel one way or they might feel another and so on and so forth. I, I mean, I can't predict because, you know, this is the first, I think the public has heard about it because this is a public meeting right here. So.
Um, I, I, I think part of what I'm picking up on Commissioner Downing is saying is that from a public policy perspective and a public communication perspective that we've all said is a strategic priority of this commission. Providing some certainty to K G Y and Mr. Thielen would be important given that they have a history of, of relationship with the port and out of respect for them. So as far as how we navigate that, Commissioner IL or Sam, as far as what needs to be on our agenda, I would be in support of the port determining what the next steps are to create more certainty. And what the staff recommendations are to do that, so that you can have more clarity as far as what you're responding to the parties. I, I think that meets the public communication and policy standpoint without us getting into operations and management. We're still being strategic and letting Sam and the staff give us recommendations, but we're responding to the public policy issue.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't disagree with, with any of that. Sam, is there anything else? Okay. All right. Well, um, I will, uh, I will work with Sam then on, uh, on, on getting that on, uh, on a, one of our future agendas here so that, uh, we can, uh, we can address that and, uh, uh, we'll, we'll make that happen. There, is there anything else that we want to cover today?
No, I appreciate that, uh, Chairman IL. That's, uh, and I appreciate your thoughts too, uh, Commissioner Evans, uh, you know, let's just give it some dialogue and, and see where we go with it.
Uh, I know that we're running short on time, but just, I wanted some that this commission is interested, not speaking for all of us, but hoping to speak for all of us. Uh, this commission is interested in getting public feedback and being responsive to that. And we're also, I, I really believe intending to support the staff in the operational and management side of things. And so that is going to be a balance as we move forward, um, because if everything's important, nothing's important. And, um, so we, how do we be responsive while still honoring, um, the, the workload of the staff? So. Thanks, guys and ladies.
Anything else then? Seems like it was a really productive day. I think it was a good learning experience for me. I, I appreciate all of that. So. Is, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
I.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.